Welcome to the North American School Board of Education, Board of Member of the 7th, this meeting is called the Order. Begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mullin, would you please say my pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to give your pledge?
Thank you.
Begin with our three senior school, here at high school, Mr. Wondery.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce Mr. Doug Lindsey, co-principal of high school, and I believe he's brought with him Ms. Jan Carmella, one of our high school counselors, to present on goal 12A. So, Mr. Lindsey, let me switch over here, get your PowerPoint pulled up. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Yep, I'm joined tonight by Ms. Carmella, and we're going to speak actually a little bit on two of the goals within 12. We're going to talk of the strategy itself, and we're going to make sure our kids are taking meaningful steps to post-secondary career while in high school. And it encompasses a lot of different strategies, but within those, they're primarily focused at our building, kind of all of them. So, we're going to start, and try to give a little update on efforts with 12A about the FASCA completion, and students completing that by the end of their 13th year, as well as a little bit on the steps we're taking out, 100% of students successfully completing, a dual enrollment, college-level class with AP or a technical. And so, to kind of get us started, let's see if we can talk a little bit about the FASCA.
So, so far, in this school year, we have worked with our seniors in particular, and we've gone into, or provided an opportunity, depending on their coursework, at LHS for our AP or our regular English 12 students to come down, and actually meet with them, talk with them, and encourage them to not only complete the FASCA, but some other components. And we did the same thing with the CFI students, that we call them CFI, but they're really the gapstone students that are taking their English 12 to our block over at CFI. Right now, we call it our campaign, because we're finishing and trying to make sure that as many of them as possible have the chance to complete their FASCA, to apply to the school, they have a parchment account, and are able to send their transcript to that student's school. And then there are a few other opportunities, things that we have them do, in terms of applying for a scholarship, et cetera, et cetera. But October really is the month where we do the first push. In addition to that, I know Doug has posted up here that we did, on October 25th, we had a FASCA completion night, because a couple of years ago, the FASCA actually started being able to be completed as of October 1. And originally, it was something we all had to wait until our taxes were completed in order to do. And now, we do it October 1, using not the taxes from April from the year before, but the year before that, frankly. And so, we've encouraged our students and our families to come in and get that assistance. We had a pretty good turnout for October 25th, but we've already worked on scheduling another night, either end of November or beginning of December. And then, when we have officially scheduled our Opportunity Night, that will be another opportunity for our families to come in and work with someone from the college level, whether it's Ma'at or OU or whoever it is, to actually complete their FASCA. I also want to add that Mrs. Peacock and I in particular, we tell our students and their parents, you don't have to wait until we have a special night. If you really think that you want to come in and get one-on-one, they can make arrangements and come in and just sit with us, and we will do their FASCA with us. Last year was, between last year and the year before, was a year where I met with a lot more families. As a matter of fact, I met with families whose kids had graduated the year before, who were now deciding to participate and maybe go on to college. And so, we are offering the same opportunity for those families, those students, so that we can get as many of them as possible.
The other thing that's up there is a piece that we do in August each year about knowing how to go, and some presentations about paying for college. They bring in some guest speakers through our panel, and our counselors talk about that. And that's really targeting all of our students of understanding, how do I find scholarships opportunities, how do I, you know, what is FASCA, what do I have to do with that? And so, trying to work, educate that. And we ran that in our nighttime registration day. So, we had our student makeup for registration, bringing their stuff to start the school year. That was a three-to-seven day if you were at the school, and we called them families and that.
And this was year two, of us utilizing that evening event, and our participation for parents, again, was very good. And so, we think that that August date, whichever is the evening time that we do, is a really good opportunity to say, hey, come on in, learn some information. And even if they can't participate that night, we think that sending out the invite actually opens the door to say, hey, listen, we're willing to have some conversation.
So, we continue to work to communicate with opportunities to parents. It's nice to know that counseling probably has their lines held by grade level, and so they'll push out the lines once the date's set for November. January, the Opportunity Night, really is the night that we have stuff planned, sixth of, for those incoming fifth graders, actually it's five of, because really it's those fifth graders that will be sixth graders learning about programs, and students at middle level, all the through programs offered at Zeller, kind of in the high school, as well as our kids that will be partying, and others push to try and get that nice support and continue to do that.
And that'll be year three for them.
Do you do it to the homeschool community, the kids that are doing all of this FASCA line?
Yes, we do. I made sure to send that to Michelle Cariso, so she could send an email to all of those families. Absolutely.
Really, in trying to get some consistent nights, within some consistent time frame, really get that out, and have parents start to know, yeah, I can expect this to be moving on, and we will communicate that. But then, the other goal I wanted to touch on, I pulled some data, just to kind of update. This was a piece, I know back in the summer of this year, and Michelle spoke to the college and career coursework. These are raw numbers on the left-hand column there for the current school year. Some of the numbers are different. Early college is up some students, mostly because we have our 13th-year students for the first time going through the program. Our AP numbers, when I pulled those, that is just the 10-12 numbers for that, very consistent. EdTech is in the ballpark as a piece. We worked with them here recently. They had an open house Monday night of this week, and we communicated that out to our 10th and 11th grade families to encourage them to go out and learn about the programs there. And then, we have visits coming up, the 29th or 30th of November.
The 30th. And EdTech had come out and done their presentation just recently, so that our students are right now turning in their applications for those programs.
One thing with the dual enrollment, the 17-18 numbers are higher, but that does reflect the fact that it was the total number of kids throughout the year. And we now simply pick up some kids in the second semester, who must move home for the first time. When we track this data overall, we're working to track that cohort. I have not gone and added this year's kids to our list to say, okay, the last year's ninth graders, we had 65 kids who had something typically through an APL, and there was about 16 kids took AP to World History. Well, now, the 10th grade, that number's almost up. And so, some of those are REPE kids, some of those are not. And so, our goal with this four goal is, by the time they graduate, we get to 100%. I think last year's graduating class was around 78%, maybe touch over that.
Yeah, that's an experience, one of those.
At least one experience over their four years in one of those opportunities. Actually, Michelle and I talked today about something that would actually add into the EdTech numbers, if new courses improve, if you go through that process, that marketing class, it would fall under the Fair Technical Education Program as well, and add another opportunity for EdTechnical. So, some of the additional steps with this, Jay and I are going to both talk a little bit about these, took some of the dates up. But one thing that we did different this year, last year, we attempted to run the Baker Running Start program, and had some struggles in getting that up and going with, worked them through that partnership. So, we look to seek out another opportunity, and this year, Jay's actually the adjunct instructor for the Ferris State University 101. It's a class our kids in the early college will provide them to take. It gets them prepared for what to expect, and what to blackboard, and things like that.
And so, yes, we are offering, it's called University 101 Kids College Study Methods course. It is directed truly towards our early college students. And so, the 11th graders who are our first-year early college, right now, they are all enrolled in this course. But we did have some early college students who are now in 12th grade, so they're year two, who did not get a chance to take some other opportunity, who are also enrolled in this class. And so, it is kind of a blended situation, in that the majority of the class, I'm thinking, please, you are totally familiar with the online piece, there's a totally blended class, where the kids do work a lot online and submit work in its grading, but we have the opportunity to actually meet with them. There are some groups that I see for about a half an hour, two or three times a week, and then there's a group of students that I see for about an hour, once a week. But there's a schedule. They all are able to communicate with me, either via phone or email, if they have questions, et cetera. And we're hopeful that the pieces of this are going to strengthen their ability to be successful, to be focused in their college classes. Right now, we are only targeting our early college students, but going forward, this is something that we do building-wise, that is, students are actually very useful, and going to help our students all as a whole going forward, that we utilize it. So far, the reception has been actually very positive, while the students at first were a little bit, I would say, overwhelmed, because they see the whole thing in front of them. Right now, what I'm hearing from a lot of them is, well, gosh, this is very doable. I can do this. I just need to sit down and actually do it. Like, it isn't that overwhelming. And so, part of the early college piece is that we have to be able to provide them opportunities to gain skills that will help them be successful, which are study skills, time management skills, those kinds of things. And this class actually does have all of those pieces embedded in it.
And one of the ideas that Ken and I spoke about initially with working for this goal was either through the Baker Running Start program, was our initial thoughts of being able to optimize all of our 10th-grade students. And just through communications and requirements that have been put in place, college level, it's not something that's going to work out. We sought out the Ferris State piece, we're working with them, piloting it with our early college kids, and it may be something that can open up to help our other students understand what it's going to take to be successful in EdTech. Already mentioned a few moments ago about the EdTech opportunities, a few days have already passed, with the 25th, we had EdTech in to present all the sophomores. On November 5th, just the other night, we mass pushed out the call, communicated families about that evening, and to welcome them out to EdTech, so they can walk around with families to see the programs. On November 30th, our students will go out and be able to tour, visit, and get an understanding of the different programs that are there, make some decisions. Mr. Jay, Ms. Carmella, Mrs. Peacock have worked to do some presentations to parents of current early college students, as well as promoting the early college program to other grade in our current sophomores, giving them thinking about. I know, I know, I talked to Mrs. Peacock the other day, she's already got families come in, and were very concerned. And filled this out, I had my letter drive, I had everything in, but she's looking forward to that opportunity in that program. And I think, right, we have 118 kids between the third grade levels right now, that are in the early college program, and being very successful.
So, is it Ferris State that runs the early college, or are you still with?
We still partner with Ma'at for our, not Baker for our.
I was just wondering, who's the program?
The vast majority of our students are in a program through Ma'at. We do have some kids with Baker.
Part of an early college program requires us as a district to provide some, you can call it credentialing, but really it is to provide some opportunities for the students to have been exposed to college study skills, time management, financial literacy, et cetera, et cetera. And so, the Ferris State class is, the purpose of it is to provide us with an avenue that we can reach our students and work with them on some of those skills, without having to have them sit down in a traditional classroom setting every day, or twice a week, or three times a week. And so, this is kind of a modified attempt. When we worked with Running Start last year, really, the intent of Running Start was to provide this opportunity in a different fashion. And since Baker went in a different direction, we've had to go in a little bit of a different direction. And so, so far, I want to say that I really like what I see with the Ferris class, I like what they're providing, and I like what I'm giving back from my students. It's a matter of, is this going to remain a good fit for our kids?
I was just curious, I didn't understand what Ferris, you know what I mean? I just wanted to make, that's just a class kind of thing.
So, it's a one-time situation?
The funny thing is, I just heard about this from a parent's perspective today from my daughter.
Yes, and so.
I've heard a lot from my daughter.
Okay, so I'm just going, she's talking about that today, and I'm like, gosh.
Is it once a week?
Well, like I said, right now, it depends. There are some students, because of their schedule, and remember, we are trying to provide what an individual student needs, so the scheduling piece becomes an issue to some extent. We have some students who are meeting, I see them once a week for this purpose. And there are other students, though, I see them twice a week, or about half the time, because we're able to capture them during their eye connect time. And some, like in Jane's case, she doesn't have an eye connect that works for that, so I see her at a different time. But the purpose of the class still remains the same. And so, it's the interaction, and what is it that they're learning or providing online really is, actually is really good.
Exactly. What I think is funny is that the word is, or what she was telling me was that they hate it, and when you hate something, technically, you broke. And so, I'm thinking, this is probably a really good thing, because let's face it, if the word is that this sucks kind of thing, you know.
Well, the way the course is set up, it provides.
They just don't like the loophole, let's face it. They don't like they have to jump the loophole, you know.
For them, they might be thinking it's a hoop, but I want to tell you that truly, it gives them pause to think about how do they use their time? What do they use to study? How do they think and remember?
Well, we've also heard pretty consistently that this is not, these programs are not about expanding the number of kids we dump into the college coursework. They have to have some skills to do that successfully, and this is the way of getting at a larger majority.
So, this is a prerequisite for them to take an early college class?
Well, I would like to say it's a prerequisite.
You said like 16-year-olds in dual enrollment course as a professor, it'd be frustrating.
It isn't necessarily a prerequisite. I'm going to be honest, I have some early college students who don't necessarily need this, because they're already serious students, and they understand how to study, and they think. However, even for that student, because we are an early college program, I want them to have the opportunity to think that through. And so, in a case like some of my students, who may not have already experienced this, but are going to be successful at the college level, I think it's still important, regardless of what early college rules say or expectations are, they need this opportunity to give themselves the chance to really think through, what am I doing, and how do I do it? Can I do it better? And there have been students, I said, well, you're right, you're a great kid, you're a good student, and you're going to study, we're good. However, what if you could learn something from this class that will shorten your study time, that will help you feel more confident and be more successful? Wouldn't that be worth it? And they have to say yes.
Jan, there's no way, there's no way even our best students, this is like metacognition, right, thinking about thinking.
Yes.
So, studying about studying, or thinking about college, is as noble of an enterprise as going to college itself, right? So, I don't care how good the students are, the average drop in GPA from high school senior year to freshman year circulation is a full point, that's national. That means 4.0 students are getting 3.0 GPAs their first freshman, first year, freshman year, all across the nation, because that's the average. So, even your really good students who you think, quote-unquote, might not need this, need to think very intuitively about the rigors of college and what it means. And I just talked to one of our teachers today, whose son is in his first year at Michigan State, it is the first week of November, her phone is already rung, and guess what? Changing my major! Which is every parent's favorite phone call to get. And this was a 4.0 student, great kid, on track, knew what he wanted to do. It's November 7, and he's changing his major already. So, anything we can do to get kids and families to have these conversations now is a really good thing.
Well, studies show that first-year experience, FYE courses, and that's basically what the sounds like, you know what I mean? Are proven to set the student.
So, are you the only one teaching this class, or do you have someone else?
Professor Jan.
Well, I'm not going to lie, it's by default. That was not the original intent.
See, it was a little instance that they have a couple people.
But there were some hurdles and things that occurred that it turns out I met.
And how many students do you have?
I have about 50.
Okay. You have other things to do, too.
I have my regular job.
I was just going to say, if you have students that are a little reluctant, you can say, this is the same kind of strategies that we're doing with our staff. We have learning coaches that are coming in and observing, so staff can get that metacognition of how they can improve. We have teachers going around, visiting other classrooms, so they can see what other people are doing. So, it's really, it's just always about self-improvement, and sometimes we do need a little bit of direct instruction on it. But I just want to say, I have a number of students right now from our high school, and they are respectful, and they are hardworking, they are organized, and they are succeeding. So, I'm very impressed, and a lot of that, I think, is attributed to the hard work of you.
Well, one thing I do want to say, I know our current number of dual enrollments for this year are down a little bit, our fees are about the same, but I think over the last few years, we've gotten better and better on getting kids placed in the right classes. And we're seeing, we're seeing a deep climb in, like, our value rate for college courses last year was about 1.5%. So, compared to what we have at the building, that sometimes gets up 10-12% for regular classes, the enhanced semester course has gone higher than that. So, I think we're getting good placement with the kids, and that's a difference.
The very last thing I want to touch on tonight is Opportunity Night. I'd already mentioned, it's a 5-12 push of what our secondary outcomes are, getting our families thinking about those opportunities down the road, starting as early as sixth grade is part of all that plan. One thing that we are looking at, I think we have a date settled in on, but looking at pushing, we've typically done that the last week of January, but we're trying to work to get that scheduled a little bit earlier, because what we've found is, it's not only a chance to advertise our programs to our kids, but it's also a chance to get word out to other community students who may be thinking about coming to look here, to come in and learn about what we have to offer. I know we had several families last year who were contemplating school choice that came. I encouraged them, as they indicated with me, this is the night, you want to come to this night. And so, we're going to hope to be able to use that, not changing its structure, but getting it out, not just for our kids, like, about what we have to offer at the secondary level, but also as we're working to attract school choice students and help our numbers.
And it's worked, so you've had a number of families come to that.
I think last year, from Opportunity Night, it was six or eight kids picked up between January and June.
And I'll, anecdotally, one of the families that Doug and I met with had a daughter that would be attending, who is attending Zeller, and another one that is attending LHS. And when we met with them, they got the tour, they heard what we have to offer, and this past fall, probably about a month ago, I was at Meyer, right in town.
Where all the magic happens.
I saw the mom right there in the bread aisle, and I said, oh my gosh, how are the girls doing? Do they really enjoy it? Because they're not on my part of the alpha. And she was, and she doesn't live here, her ex-husband lives here, and she had nothing but positive things to say about how happy both the daughters were, and what they were experiencing, and what they, as separate parents, who, she does not live in the community, and what they were experiencing. And so, to move it a little bit closer, we, there are a variety of reasons, and so, I'm hopeful, I'm glad that that's what we're doing.
Other questions?
I don't really have a question, I just have a comment. I've been to the high school during first couple of weeks of school, and these counselors, you do amazing job, and I mean, I'm telling you, you wear so many different hats, that I know one of these types, randomly, you can ever get them some more help. Look at what they're doing, I mean, look at the things that they're going through, and it's just too much, I mean, it really is, we're going to have to handle some.
You could obviously argue, just the 118 kids that are in the college program, and all the work there, that's a second job.
Absolutely. I can also say, my daughter does a dual enrollment, and I'm telling you what, she's a different kid this year, because she gets that break in the day, and she gets to go, and then the funny thing is, I see her doing homework, and I've never seen her do homework before. So, she's taking it seriously, and it's like, just one or two classes really changes their perspective about what college is like. And it just, it's just so awesome to see her get so excited, like, she does not miss college class, and it's just, high school's no big deal, we can miss that any day.
That's the number one reason of our students that do fail college classes, number one reason is, they miss more. We get attendance for our programs, and the kids who fail those classes have multiple instances.
And the last thing is, I'm going to put a plug in, because I told Matt about this, that I went into a competitor high school, I guess you would say, and did some presentations on like a Strategy of Success, or a Life Skills, or some type of class, and talked about, you know, not just overall community college, university, and making those kids go out and look up what two-year colleges cost, what four-year public costs, what four-year private costs. And we talk about this, and then we go, okay, which 101 is the same at a community college, I don't care what, when you pick, Oakland, whatever, as it is at Oakland University. And so, these students, they really had a hard time comprehending that their degree doesn't come from the community college. You know, they wanted the same. They kept asking me, so you mean, I don't get a degree? And I'm like, you don't have to get a degree, you can just transfer, and it's from where you end. And their eyes were open, and it was just, it was such a positive experience, so I'm willing to help out in any way I can, so eye connects or whatever.
Back to the FASCA discussion, there's so many missed opportunities by that misconception that, and I think it's more on parent, is that my son or daughter can't go to this school because it costs too much. And in the end, sometimes, it doesn't really matter.
They need to qualify for a program.
And so, are you addressing that during the FASCA discussion?
It really is, and we have switched over the last probably four years, in our discussion or recommendation, the encouragement to do the FASCA, from, well, wait a minute, you think maybe you don't qualify? Well, you thought you were going to actually get a scholarship? You're not going to actually receive your scholarship unless you do the FASCA. So, we have a student right now who's like, ah, the parent is like, well, my kid's going to go to OU, we don't qualify, he's a really good student. Well, you won't even get OU's awards for a freshman if you don't do this, because they require it now. And so, that has helped to change it. And then, going into this fall, one of the other things that, we tell the kids, if they are TIP eligible, which is the Tuition Incentive Program, and it can be a few things, so at the heart of it, it really is two years community college tuition. So, if you qualify, there are some things that have to happen in order for you to get that money. And there are other ways to use the money, but really, that's like the beginning. And so, this year, part of our college month in October was to say, you need to find out if you're TIP eligible. And so, they had to ask one of us if they were. And if they happened to be TIP eligible, they, that were told, this is where you go, this is the website, finish the process. Because if your parents didn't do it based on the postcard or the letter that they got, you want to, because that's free money right there. And if you want to go to a four-year, there are four years that take it a little bit differently. But at the very least, I used to tell my students, where are you going to college next year, because you've got two years paid for right now, that not. And so, there are some things that we are doing to try to help them see that. It really isn't about worrying whether your parents make too much money, it really is about finishing this piece, to find out what you might have out there for you.
One of the things I talked about in my presentation was, do you realize that a college will put more money on a transfer student, scholarship-wise, than a well-studied freshman? And it's because, we talked about this group, why do you think that? And they went, I proved myself, and I proved myself. And they went, I proved myself and I said, yes.
We want you.
Northwood gives seven thousand dollars right off the top, just cause you're a transfer. And it's just, but it makes sense because I'm not gonna put money on somebody I don't know. I'm gonna put somebody, money on somebody that's successful.
See, that's a lot of money.
So exactly.
Right, right now, Northwood, Northwood for business, they are, they're all over the place.
Amazing. And we do three years at Mott, now I'm one year.
And you can go there for one, that's right.
Do you know how much money, I mean, we.
And you can add more and get your masters right now.
Exactly. It's just amazing opportunities. Those students have to see this, they have to see the vision and they have to realize it's doable. And I think that's the biggest piece that I tried to get across to them was, and maybe it's just your starter certificate. Maybe you don't think you're good, but you can, electrical, you know what electrical people are making nowadays? We can't keep students in programs for it. They're walking out with sixty thousand dollars a year jobs. Or more. And so even sometimes just that, getting them into a trade works.
Works.
So, and then they get successful and they feel good about it.
And so that traditional kid, if we can get them to take a single or, or two or three dual enrolls, even though they can do up to ten. If we can get them to see themselves where you're talking, all of a sudden they realize, I can do this, like I can do this with my high school stuff, I'm in. What, that other part of it is for us to convince the kids and their parents in our community that apprenticeships are really huge. And that a place like Mott, look at their certificates. And so we have that list and we are promoting that because sometimes we have students who are more hands-on learners and they really do believe, well, I don't wanna take like one-on-one. And I certainly don't care about study.
But you don't have to.
And, but they think they do. And so we're trying to get to them now to say, well, wait, what if you get a certificate or you get an associate in this that's hands-on?
It's really cool, I have a student that I had at Lehigh for dual enrollment, that she followed me and now I have her at Mott full. And she's lit, she's a first year freshman and she's almost got her degree done. And they're all semester.
Is she one of, she's one of our. Tell me. I hope we don't mind.
It's a line.
Well, I've got a couple misses.
I think she is.
I know from a personal standpoint, you know, my daughter, if she completes this semester, she'll, she'll be a pretty big class. You know, so it's just a lot of good opportunities and giving that word out, partners and families has been, I think, everybody.
Thank you for a great presentation.
It's very interactive.
You can't count that part.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. We have two public comment cards tonight. Taken from the board before we have a public comment. A board meeting is a meeting of our school district officials that is held in public, it is not a public meeting. The board sets aside time for public comment. Public comment is not an open forum and request for presenters to address the board. The board will not respond to those making vote of comments, but may direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenters. That lack of response should not be construed as agreement or disagreement with those comments. It is merely the board stating compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the posted agenda for this meeting. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenters to be respectful of any person they comment about. And we do have two cards with the same topic tonight. And so you are welcome to come up together if you'd like, if not, um, then Manday Swatter. Okay, you're coming up together again.
But I'm still sorry, May is first. Um, so my name is Mayne Swatter, good evening everyone. And I'll be the ten to talk most about cross-country in our middle school season this year, but I wanna take this opportunity to introduce myself. So this is my first year working with middle school cross-country as a coach. So I've worked a little with the high school, primarily girls tennis JV with the old Lehigh class. And then, uh, the Lehigh High School as well. And then also worked with Ken a number of years ago when he worked at the high school as an assistant coach for cross-country. So I'm happy to be back. I do live and reside in Lehigh, however, um, I was laughing when you said, oh, and I also have a full-time job in addition to what else you're doing. Um, so I also have a full-time job. So I'm a territory manager and field sales trainer for Procter and Gamble. So I do that full-time, very happy to be here and working with the kids, so thank you.
I'm Kat McGinty, I know most of the board members. Um, and I'm just gonna kinda sum up what kinda season of middle school I had this year. Uh, this is my tenth year coaching cross-country at some level. And this is my third year at Moonee Warner and Zimmer. And I can honestly say this was my most enjoyable year of coaching. I hope next year I can come back and say that again. Um, just the numbers we had, the work ethic that was instilled, it just was a very enjoyable season. Um, on the boys' side, um, we had sixteen boys finish and complete the season. Five home or sixth graders, nine of them in seventh and two of them in eighth. And in cross-country, um, your top five runners score for you. You can have a hundred kids on your team, your top five across the finish line score for you. And that's how you win meets. Um, the sooner they get across the finish line, the lower your score is. We had two of our boys go down with pre-existing injuries within the first two weeks of school. So when two of your top five go out in the first two weeks, you kind of, your season's gonna kinda take a hit. And it did. Um, they won one dual meet, they were Elmont Invitational Champions, which was a big confidence booster. Um, and then the Flint Metro League had their first ever middle school championship. Um, so that's when all the schools in the area go and that's where you kind of wanna shine. And I'm happy to say we had one of our boys finish in the top twenty-five, top twenty-five got medals. He finished eighth place, is one of our eighth graders. Um, he only lost one dual meet all season. He was champion in all the other ones. So I see great things for him in the future when he heads to the high school. Um, as far as the girls team goes, we had thirty-two finish and complete the season. We had six eighth graders, six seventh graders and twenty-sixth graders. And I think a lot of that has to do with being an elementary phys ed teacher. I round up all the teachers at the end of the year, I say, go after your top guys, go after your top girls. I give them all the handouts we're gonna get at RW, so they're already hit before elementary gets out. And so that right there in itself was a big help. Um, the girls, I kept telling them, the girls are good, we have a good team. And then we start the season only three. We did not win one of our first three dual meets. I told them, stick with me, stick with the program, trust me. We can have five girls finish within forty seconds, that's a tough pack, trust me, it will pay off. So then we won our first dual meet at Holly. Then they were Elmont Meet Champions. The lowest score you can get in a cross-country meet is fifteen, they scored fifteen. They took the top first, I think, eight places in the race and just were dominant. Um, then we won another dual meet. Then we went to Torzuski for the high school, uh, middle school invitational. And there were eight or nine teams there and Oxford was there. And that's kind of like where we like to measure ourselves because they're always a perennial powerhouse. And we didn't even run, run one of our top five girls that day due to a nagging kind of injury. And we took second place only ten points behind Oxford. And I just said, just thank girls, if she would've ran that day, we probably could've really, really gotten close to Oxford. So now they're getting pumped and we only have one dual meet left, the next, the championship at Davisburg, Holly was hosting. Uh, twelve teams were gonna be in this race. And I told the girls, first of all, one team is on another planet, uh, Grandland West, don't even, I mean, their girls are good. So they understood, second place on down was up for the taking. And they said, yeah, coach, what about those three teams that beat us in the season? I said, don't worry, we got them, trust me. So the race came, uh, we finished in fourth place, we were eight points out of third, get the trophy. We did beat those three teams, uh, that beat us earlier in the season. And we had two girls earn top twenty-five, they were sixteen and seventeen. One was a sixth grader, one was an eighth grader. And even more good news that come out of that meeting, they had a varsity race and a JV race. In the varsity race, you can only run your top ten girls. So that fourth place team was our top ten girls only. Out of that top ten, one was an eighth grader. So the other nine moved back. Of those nine, five were sixth graders. So like any other coach, you look at the other teams, you pull out all their eighth graders, you look to see where you can finish. And I told the students at my exit interview, watch for us these next two years because those sixth graders are gonna be seventh graders and they're gonna be eighth graders. I said, in two years, watch out for Lehigh because they will be one, two. Um, so he was very happy to hear that. Um, so that was a nice way to end our season, knowing what's coming back and knowing how good they're gonna be next year. Um, so I just wanted to put this out there to end with, if you haven't seen a middle school cross-country race in a few years at RW, that's our own course. The girls are exciting to watch. Uh, hopefully the boys will be a little bit better next year with our recruiting tactics in elementary. But, um, I was, I was pretty excited this year, but these next two years are capable of being a big step in the program. So thank you.
That takes us to reports. We have two reports tonight, the finance and operations and teaching and marketing and faculty. We will begin with Mrs. Bush for the finance and ops.
Finance and ops, planned on October twenty-ninth at eight AM with our auditors. And I'm not gonna steal their thunder, so it was a wonderful meeting and that's all I have to say about it right now.
Well, there are questions. How wonderful.
I'm gonna say that on mine.
Mrs. Byer.
Can I just say that it was wonderful?
No.
All right, all right. So we met, I told the three of you, myself, Denise, Lisa, and all that, Matt Warner, Michelle Bradford. Uh, and mostly we spoke about the M stuff. So Michelle, executive director for curriculum and instruction, reviewed the district's board from M staff test taken last spring. And she compared them to the surrounding and peer districts based on similar student count and demographics. Um, the scores indicate that our students are performing above statewide trends and above our peer districts in many areas, which is an improvement from last year. Scores improved in most areas, including third, fourth, fifth and eighth grade English Language and Arts. Third, fourth, fifth, sixth and eighth grade math and fifth, eighth and eleventh grade social studies. And the data clearly shows that our new curriculum, professional development supports in place are working. The two thousand and eighteen M staff feedback is an important tool so that our teachers and administrators can determine how well they are serving students and how they can continue to provide even more support. Administration, administration will be analyzing the scores to assess the success of their efforts, to close performance gaps between different groups of students. M staff results will help uncover inequities of learning, help us to target resources to close those gaps. It was really wonderful, those are improving and what we're doing is working, so great job. And, uh, the second thing was overnight out-of-state trip request, um, for the FTC robotics to Battle Creek if they qualify to attend. And it was our consensus that it be added to this agenda for consideration. And meaning of journey?
Thank you, Mrs. Byer. And that is great, I almost wanted to read it again.
No, it was a great meeting.
Any questions for Mrs. Byer? Okay, so we will move on to our presentations tonight for the two thousand and eighteen audit report by Plant Moran.
Mr. President, at this time it's my pleasure in this board to Eric Formberg, Mr. Stacy from Plant Moran to present the year on the June thirty, two thousand and eighteen audit report. Formberg, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Uh, first off, a wonderful meeting, I'm making a note of that, that's.
It was exciting.
I, I, I don't, I don't get to hear that very often. So, uh, and, uh, and, and we'll get into some of the details of Black Lives, but in fact, uh, it, it, it proves this. Um, and I love actually coming aboard me, especially to hear this presentation that you do in committee. Uh, really an opportunity for me personally, just to get a taste of some of the amazing things that are going on here. And as I listen to both presentations, the word that came to mind to me was passion. Um, you have individuals that are truly passionate about the things that they're, that they're involved in. To, to take middle schoolers, and actually they don't have to focus on anything, it's not, okay? Uh, but, but to take that and to really craft that into a team, that was, that was amazing. And to hear the things that are going on in, in high school and, and to hear about the opportunities that you got out of new students. Um, I have the privilege of talking to Mr. Martin, Kerry Hopkins, our dear. And, uh, one of the things that always amazed me and as well as the passion that he has as well, is his focus on, on innovative learning opportunities. And think, rethinking, revisiting, how, how can we help students be truly successful? Uh, and the last thing that stuck on my mind was the FASA. I hate it. Uh, I filled that forum out for six years, it was painful every time.
It's not anymore.
Even though it was half populated when they, when they. But, but, but the emphasis that I had there was, hey, you know what? There's great value here. And if we take it and turn it on instead of a burden, turn it into an opportunity, we're gonna boost students into an opportunity to improve in the future. So in my mind, I always had it as nothing to do with the office board.
Hey, that was a good say there, because she almost came out of her chair. Don't bad mouth a master, good saying.
I know. And, but, but, but the reality of it is, the financial information and the data that you use to work with on a day and the day our basis drives a lot of the fuel uh, that I use to fund all those, all those things and be able to make those kinds of investments. So, uh, what we wanna do is give you a brief highlight of the financial results, remind you of a few things. A few things, uh, and make a few comments on, on, on some individuals that may, uh, may not be at the next board meeting that I come to. Um, the, uh, the audit of, of the district's financial statements is required by state leadership. Uh, every school district gets an audit of the financial statements you have junior in, um, and that's kind of the framework that the operator has. In addition, you have federal funds that, that you use in order essentially to provide supplemental services to students in one form or another. There's a federal requirement that says those resources also have to be audited. When we look at those, our mission, uh, is to come in at the end and, and take a look. But I, I like to characterize it more as a report card. In other words, you, you did the class, you did all the work, you got to the end, you even took the exam, now what does the report card say? And your report card, uh, is as good as it gets. Um, if I was ever to characterize it, you got an A, but you really got it in a plus. The A is because we didn't have any modifications to the P. We didn't, we didn't identify anything that, that was a financial problem or error in the financial condition that was wrong. But we also look at laws and regulations and we look at controls on the financial structure. And our question is, hey, is it built right and is it working? We don't test it for effectiveness necessarily, but we go, do go through and we look to see whether or not it is operating. We didn't have any issues there either. So from, uh, and that also applies to the government. When we step way back and we say, how is all that going? Okay, and, and you had a new systems conversion, I remember a year ago, and this is kind of year two of that period. Where you, we had first full year of early getting and making sure that it's working. We didn't identify the issues. It's a compliment to Mark and the Mac and the team, as well as the integrated efforts. Because for the first time, you had a financial system that integrated with the other operating systems. And that also was, was a difference, which required different groups that didn't really have to network together, they had to network together to make sure they were getting good data and using it back. So at the end of the day, as we go in and we talk about the numbers, the thing I really want you to take back from that is, is that you've had really a lot of, some making sure you have good information in the audit results. Tiffany, now you might remember Breann, she's been with us for many years. Breann is still around, but she actually moved to Grand Rapids and she's working in our Grand Rapids office. And so Tiffany Stacy is, uh, just slimmed right in and has had extensive experience in public schools and has proven, drove a lot of parts of the way you wanted to go.
Great, I'm gonna go over some of the financial highlights on the graph presentation. The first slide shows the government's balance sheet as of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. I'm gonna focus on the general fund on this slide. Assets were sixteen point one million at June thirty and this is up about four point five million from last year. And that really relates to the cash balance. Cash is up because the state gave anticipation note that was outstanding during the year, did not require any set aside payments during the year. So the entire balance of the stated amount was outstanding at June thirty. So none of that cash reduced financial payments during the year. So on the other side, your liabilities are also up about four point three million, about the same amount, because that six point five million dollar anticipation note is fully outstanding at June thirty and was made subsequent to year end using that excess cash that you have. Uh, the other main category of assets would be the receivables at June thirty, that's seven point four million, that's consistent with last year. And that's primarily made up of the July and August stated benefits received subsequent to year end. The other main category of liabilities would be the accrued liabilities and other, four point five million at year end. That's made up primarily of July and August teacher salaries and benefits that are approved at June thirty. Any questions? The next slide covers the statement of revenue expenditures on. The next slide covers the statement of revenue expenditures on most governmental funds. I'm going to touch briefly on the totals in this slide, and then we'll kind of dig into the categories in later slides. Revenue, it was 49.2 million dollars for the year ended June 30, 2018. And that's pretty consistent with prior year. Prior year was about 49 million. Expenditures are 49 million at the end of the year, and last year was about 48.3 million. So when you look at all of these results together, you show an increase in fund balance in the general fund, about $215,000 for June 30, 2018, year end. The next slide shows the statement of net position. Now, it's important to note on this slide, this is on the full accrual basis. This is not the fund-level financial statements that we're used to seeing, the budgets and things that you adopt at board meetings. So the full accrual statement of net position differs from the governmental fund balance sheet, primarily related to capital assets and the related accumulated depreciation. And the two liabilities that you see at the bottom of the liability section, the net pension liability, and this year you'll see there's a net OPEB liability. An OPEB liability is the healthcare portion of the Mancers Plan. So if you remember back a few years ago, the district adopted GASB 68, which was an accounting pronouncement that required all school districts in the state of Michigan to record their proportionate share of the net pension liability for the Mancers Plan. So that's the 77.6 million dollars you see at June 30, 2018. So this year, there's a new accounting standard, GASB 75, that basically is the same accounting treatment before that healthcare piece of the plan. So you'll see that new liability of 26.4, 26.5 million. The deferred inflows and outflows are also related to those plans. There's a difference between the plan year end, which is September 30th, and the school year end. So there's some different inflows and outflows related to that. The thing that we want to make clear here is all school districts have these liabilities on their statement of net position, on the full accrual statements. And it's not something that's due and payable. You can't write a check and make it go away. It's allocated to all the districts based on total contributions to the plan and that district-specific share of those contributions. So when you add those in to the statement of net position, you end up with that net deficit position, but you'd be hard-pressed to find a school district that wasn't in the deficit position on this specific statement.
Thankfully, we're not in any danger of writing the check to make that.
Correct.
We don't pay up the costs for two years.
Yeah.
Any questions? This graph shows the general fund revenue for a three-year comparison. And it breaks it out between local, state unrestricted, state restricted, and federal and other. Local and federal and other are very consistent with prior year. The state unrestricted amount is down. And this is the piece that is directly related to student count. The student count is down about 179 students for this year '18, so you see that revenue running down. The state restricted piece, on the other hand, is up. The state restricted piece is up due to 147 C money. So this is money that comes in on the state aid report, but has to be turned around and directly remitted back to ORFs to help with pension costs. So those pension liabilities that I was just talking about, these funds come in and then they go directly back out to the state. And there was a new one-time payment on the state aid report this year, it was 147 C 2 money. And the district received about $606,000 of that money, which was remitted to the state for ORFs pension costs. And so that's why you see that increase in the restricted funds. The next slide shows the general fund expenditures in various categories. I already mentioned that expenditures remain pretty consistent from year to year. But one thing you will notice on this slide is there was a slight shift between instruction and support. Yep, so you'll see the instruction went down from 62% of total expenditures to 59, and support went from 34 to 37. And this is really due to just a reclassification of positions. So the 31A learning coaches were reclassified from instruction to support. When the system conversion happened and took a hard look at the account structure and the coding, it was determined that these would be better fit in support services.
And that does make some sense, because in the old system, they are still part of the LEA category. As teachers, they're part of that unit, so it would make sense that in the old system, if you categorized as instructional, the conversion built on the degree to get those costs, so.
But that's a point I want to be real clear to the board, that doesn't mean we're spending lots on instruction. What it means is they redefine what instructors are. So if we have learning coaches, those are not instructors.
And this should have felt better, so to speak.
This next graph takes those instructional expenditures that we looked at in the previous tab in comparison to the average group these schools. You're going to see that dip because of the reclassification that I just mentioned. But you will see that, you know, the trend for, you're not going to necessarily see the other group these schools doing that same trend, because they may already classify these coaches in their support versus instruction.
If I could just add a comment, the other schools won't be given rewards like Mrs. Byer, do you think?
Correct, correct. That was an excellent remark.
Sorry, I had to.
I'll be the bearer of the goodness.
The next slide is another analysis of expenditures. It's just different categories, since I have the code, so you have capital, outlay, supplies, and other purchase services, and salaries and pringles. So the one thing I want to point out on this slide is that salaries and pringles, your biggest category of expenditures, was about 84% of your total expenditures in prior year. It's about 85% this year, so very consistent from year to year. The next slide looks at a couple of different metrics for the general fund balance. So the yellow-orange section is the traditional fund balance divided by expenditures. Your fund balance increased this year, as I mentioned, $215,000. So the percentage went up to 7.51%, a little bit closer to the board goal of 10%. The metrics that are in the blue section are the early warning metrics. And this is the metric that state of Michigan uses to monitor school districts. And the formula for this metric is fund balance divided by unrestricted revenues. So the different percentage, Lupiers at 9.5% this year with that metric. And really, the state takes a harder look at districts that are falling below 5% in that category. So, that's what we're looking at. This slide looks at foundation allowance for Lupiers. The foundation allowance on the state average, so about 835 schools that we had data for. And also the foundation allowance for schools similar in size to the group these schools. And we had about 47 schools with data on those schools. So it takes the 7,631 foundation allowance for Lupiers. But then it also looks at that state average and applies it to the Lupiers' current student count to look at the potential impact that it would have on Lupiers' foundation, which is at the bottom of the graph. So you can see how much that foundation allowance and the student count would impact the revenues that Lupiers have. Any questions?
Again, as you well know, you can't change that fact. Your foundation allowance is your foundation allowance, and the legislature defines how that number grows, and if it grows. But the gaps that we've identified over the last several years are actually getting smaller. Because Snyder used that 2X formula, where the lowest funded districts had a higher increase than the higher funded districts. So you see a shrinking of that, or a more leveling of the three bars.
This slide looks at general fund revenue expenditures on a per pupil basis. And really, what you want to see on this graph, you see the lines are moving together, which is a good thing. Which is, your increase in fund balance is a result of these lines moving together. But you'll also see that they are moving up, and that's a result of your student count decreasing, but your revenue expenditures are remaining consistent, so that line is trending up at a higher cost and higher revenue per pupil. Any questions? I'm going to turn it back over to Eric to talk about future uncertainties a little bit, about the election last night and the school funding.
So, things are changing. Things are changing at state level, things are changing at federal level, things are changing at the local district level. So Gretchen Whitmer's going to be in the government. She's going to have basically a Republican legislature to work with. So now the question becomes, what comes of that? That will be the defining question as it relates to public education. I heard a snippet, I think when she was talking for the FBI, where she referenced the dollars that had been taken from school aid to fund Hyatt, and said that basically, hey, that shouldn't have happened, and that money really shouldn't be expensed and paid for. Now, by the way, when I wrote a proposal, that's what I wrote before. I didn't think I was going to pay the Hyatt. So I agree with that conclusion. The hard part in all of this will be, how do you make that happen? Because the reason why all that happened, if you go back about nine years, the reason why all that happened was because school aid was kind of doing okay, and the general fund was not doing well at all. And they said, hey, constitutionally, we can tap this to pay for Hyatt. So let's go ahead and do that. So to reverse that requires somebody finding a significant amount of dollars. And how all that's going to work, how that conversation is going to work out, is really going to impact what our funding future looks like. You're set for this next year, the year that you're in now. You know, you're going to get your $240 for people. There's no expectation that they'll be in a situation, that's fine. They're going to be working on the budget. You're used to getting in for the beginning of June. I don't know that you will. If the governor has some creative ideas, now you've got to get a Republican legislature to agree to those creative ideas. So the way that conversation is going to work is a little bit, it's going to be a little, real unknown. And something to watch there.
One of the things that was, I think, a little disturbing in this FASA, just like we talked about tonight, was she was not, she said she was looking to take away the early challenge for schools giving funding for early person, the college. So that's kind of a big deal, it could be a big deal for our community.
For our kids.
And that's one of a whole list of things. And the way I characterize it is this, for the last eight years, if you look at your funding chart, for the last eight years, rightly or wrongly, your funding stream and environment that you work in was relatively poor. Okay, now, you're going to have a new norm. Whatever that's going to be, I don't know, but it's going to be a new normal. And it's going to take a couple of years for that to even settle down. So, as a school board, and this is the part I really care about, as a school board, you're going to need to be able to think, you're going to have to monitor carefully, but you're also going to have to think strategically about how we're going to implement our resources in order to make sure that we continue to reform and make the kind of progress that we're showing.
Which is really the thrust of a strategic plan, is can we operate in the same fashion, with the same kind of rotational footprint? If we can, down the road of a couple of years, sure, we could probably do that. We've got clean out of the force for, you know, five years here, something look good. But is that really given the uncertainty of what funding will look like in the future? Is that a wise, prudent move? Eric, I wonder if you could speak to, and I might ask you to name any district or something like that, but in relative comparison to, for our peers, if you look at a number of districts, given the following variables, where do we rank? The fact that, and we know the numbers, since 2008, state of Michigan, public school districts have lost a little over 10% of the student population decline. In that same 10-year period, peers lost close to 27% of the student population. So is it remarkable? Is it average? Is it just okay, good? We've been able to, you know, for three consecutive years, put money into our fund balance, you know, settle the contracts with all of our bargaining units, you know, make some tough decisions as it relates to consolidation piece, right? And continue to offer academic opportunity to kids. Are those, is that remarkable in any way? Is that average? What is your experience? I might ask you to name any districts, but just from a broader perspective of, because we've been living the Lupiers reality for a decade.
It tilts in the direction of remarkable. For some basic reasons. One, every district, almost every district, is trying to deal with student count reductions. And we talk about them in terms of 100, 170, you know. You add that together for a couple of years, and then it's built. But they're not all that built, okay? So now you have to reconfigure and realign. Couple of years ago, you went from two high schools down to one high school. One of the things that I thought was truly remarkable about that, you know, I was around when Lupiers left, and Lupiers, that was a big deal. And if you went to one, and then when there was a decision to bring that together and to create a sense of community around it, that was a big deal. When I went to other districts, I talked about that, because that was a big deal. The degree to which you've been able to get a commonality of vision and then allow your plan on the board also is exceptional. I go to a couple of other districts where the, you know, the boards spend more time arguing with each other than trying to resolve all the issues at the base. So, as that format showed, you have, you're at the bottom end of the scale, you've got a lot of companies, a lot of districts that's funny, where you're at. But they all have basically the same problem, which is you have less resources today than you did several years ago. If you take the $470 current effect, all that into the conversation, you've been asked to do more. You've been asked to be more innovative today than you were then. And get better student performance, if you want to be a brother. And those are really, really, really hard things, really hard things to do. But every district, every district is struggling with the same thing. They do it differently, but they're all struggling with it. And I have other places where they truly are. And when you look at your point of view situation, it's not that the board goal and client that's in significant fund ups. So they're trying to do all the same things while getting on the depth side at the same time. Well, nearly impossible. So you really should have got us all right by the way here, you know. I know, it's not perfect, it's not the way you absolutely want it to be, but you've done some really, really good things here. And you have people with passion that are behind it. And I think that goes a little bit of the way. That's going to be the only solution, just my perceptions. Speaking of passion, you have two school representatives, and one of which I worked with very, very long time.
Since she was an infant.
Well, I thought you joined the board as an infant, 23 short years ago, right?
I watched you grow. Oh, I did.
She's even tried to find a balance of double pauses. So, and, you know, to both of you, for your service, the comments I made earlier are really, really important. This is, I think, one of the toughest, one of the toughest elected jobs there is. It truly is. And in terms of tangible impact, it has some of the best. And for those that are jumping in, go for it. I hope in ten years, as long as I can, you probably won't say that. But I really appreciate the efforts from both of you that you put forward to the district. And then to the business office, you know, we gave good results. And those results have included each year. Appreciate everything that Mark said is always accessible to me. And then there's this guy over here, who I understand is his last board meeting. And I've worked really well with him over the last three years, and he's worked really, really hard to give us what we need and be responsive and have more fun on the way. Thank you, for what you've done. You know, I just appreciate what you do here, I really do. And I appreciate the efforts, especially on the finance side, in order to make sure that we have a good portfolio.
I was in the meeting last week, and I just think this is a positive thing to point out. thing to point out on our stage in number seven, that we're in the top 10 of, in the state for percent of funds in construction. That, I don't know what I took from our meeting, which I think is a, considering this, on this graph, this number went down due to re-precipitation, we're still in the top 10, which is something I think should be proud of.
Absolutely. So one thing about construction, which I think Matt, you alluded to, is that number is just dollars spent in the classroom, think teacher, you know, teaching materials, that, that, that really serves. A lot of the things, for instance, that you, that you talked about, and the efforts that you put in terms of stimulating student success, those are actually considered support services, right? Okay? They have everything to do with construction, in that they, they equip students to be successful. And you know, a lot of what we talked about in that, in one of my classes, I thought was, oh, yes, it's something.
I can't, I can't.
Eric, can I ask one question while you're here? I, I find myself regularly in conversations with folks who seem to know from the political side an awful lot that I don't seem to know. And one of the things they seem to know repeatedly is that school districts are funded better now than they have ever been before.
Thank you.
And what I also think I heard you say was that unrestricted funds, the stuff we actually get to use and play with and spend, keep here in our district, is down.
Yes.
And restricted funds, those funds that come to us but go right back out the door, now that's up.
Right.
So money we don't get to use and don't get to play with and don't get to spend on our kids, yes, that gives us more of that.
Yeah. Well, we, we didn't talk about the retirement system specifically, but, but the single thing of driver that is the meat of your question is, the, the retirement system, once it's closed, prior to proposal A, you pay five cents on the dollar. For a dollar comp, you, you, you have an additional five cent contribution to the retirement system. Immediately after proposal A, that turned to eleven cents, because the state is kind of right funding some of it, now it's at 37 cents on the dollar. Okay? So for a hundred dollar comp, you have to pay 37 cents to the pension additional. The state has provided some resources to the district to help pay the bill, okay? Once, it's still your bill, and don't ever forget that. It's, that 37, that's your bill. Now, they've given you some cash so that it knocks the effective cost of that down about 26, 27 cents on the dollar, but that, that, those, that money that they gave you is just to pay the retirement bill, that is wrong exponential. And that's not to say the retirement's bad or good, that's not the point, it just is. And the dollars that the governor put in that direction, and part of his strategy was to say, we, you know, we need to try to manage this better, and so we're going to move dollars over that. But what that doesn't do is, it doesn't give you money to pay for, um, you know, you know, a, a 101 program, because that, that's not, that's, it, it, it's not, um, it's already men's welcome. And that, that's the hard part. Probably the only place that we've seen a little bit of growth in that category that is actually helpful would be in like the 31A money over the last, not maybe the last two years, but previous to that, we saw some growth in that. Um, the other place that we saw some growth is in preschool.
Real, real money, yeah, real money.
Yeah, because they said, hey, you know what? You know, if we help preschoolers to be able to read before they get to kindergarten, they do a lot better. Um, but, but those are the only areas in the last 10 years that we've really seen confusion of these dollars.
What adding to that, the move from defined benefit to defined contribution, we'll see, we'll see in future more of that, that, that hourglass shrinking, right? The amount of money going in to support those that are requiring, it's just not going to be there. I still don't know how that's going to work in the future, how we're going to end up paying that.
So getting to the substance of your 37 cents on the dollar, when the legislature passed that a year ago, the presumption was, it's going to save money. Maybe 20 years from now, it might, okay? But that obligation, that 37 cents on the dollar, it is not going to go down. It might even go up a little. Look, okay? It is not going to go down, because you still have to pay for the funding that's there. Plus, now you have to pay for the increased benefits of the, I have a future plan. So, so.
Two systems.
Now, you know, again, no solution has been proposed for that, but again, and the legislature passed it, the tone was, this is going to fix the problem. I'm not saying it's not a good policy, it just didn't fix the problem.
I just, I'm, I'm hoping they can come up with a bonding solution, or something to take care of that, that jump that's going to be on the white, on the district's number.
And you're just going to got to make that happen.
Uh, the election is over. If you need Gretchen's email, I think I can get that for you. Um, kind of related to that, and some of the things that you were talking about, the, the, the funding study that was done, that was completed a lesson a year ago, um, the goal of that was not to say we should just go to Florida, it was really to figure out what kind of resources are needed in order to provide an appropriate education, and those, what kind of services do we need for, for students with these neat categories? And, and, and how can we create a robust system for at least a system, what those resource needs are? Um, that, that study has gotten a little bit blighted, uh, and whether or not, not the election's over, I may as attention to it, I don't know, but it has a lot of really good information. If, if they do go to revisit proposal A and the funding structure and that kind of thing, to be able to pick that up and say, you know, we need to just not give everybody the same check and hope it works out okay, but we need to really be thoughtful about the kind of resource needs that, that students need to be successful, and how can we, how can we provide those resources to make, to make that happen? Even Massachusetts, which is often held out as the best, highest performing educational system, believe it or not, they have proposal A, like funding process, they are revisiting how they're going to fund education. So, I mean, it, you know, again, it's a public policy thing, but it would seem like it's an appropriate question to, to this.
State film?
Pardon?
State film?
That's right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, and thank you. I, I appreciate, appreciated knowing you since I was a kid.
I think we know, we know that line.
All right, to take us to our next presentation tonight, to the superintendent evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on the adoption of the, um, new superintendent evaluation process last year, there is a requirement for the superintendent to provide two formal updates in the course of the evaluation cycle here, and this is formal update number one. And so I, the board was sent a copy of this PowerPoint and my narrative assessment in advance of today's meeting, so I will not labor the point. You read it, you have access to SharePoint, you have the opportunity to evaluate all of the documents and evidence that I've uploaded to SharePoint in an ongoing way. Personally speaking, I love the new evaluation system, it's focused solely on board goals. Um, everything that you hear from the, the buildings that present is reflected in my evaluation, that's what I've evaluated on. So what we hold the buildings accountable to, our principals, our teachers, our learning coaches, our central office administrators, it's the exact same thing you evaluate MEA. So, uh, those are the, the areas in which you would evaluate MEA on, and all of the required domains are part of the SharePoint file. And you have the opportunity at any given time to, um, access that link, to see what information you would like to see data on. Additionally, you have the opportunity to submit questions or concerns at any given time, right here under School Board Member Questions. I go on SharePoint probably once a week, as I see something that's applicable to upload as evidence of achieving a particular goal. I open up School Board Member Questions once a week just to see what's going on. Mr. Keller is, is proactive in communicating with you at every step of the way, to say if you have any questions for Mr. Wondery or something that you want to see information on. So, for example, I, I provided a narrative for formal update, click on it, that file is right here for your review. So everything that you want to know and more can be found in that SharePoint file. And we have actually looked at things, um, in terms of like community relations, uh, recent articles that have been printed in the county press, on strategic planning, uh, on, um, you know, I submitted a editorial, so I made a copy of that, put that in there for the board review. I know you don't have enough pictures of me, so I figured, uh, what a great opportunity to have another one. But just evidence as it relates, one thing to note, in each domain, so domain B is community relations evidence, so you'll see at the heading of each one of these categories, B1, B3, B4, those are the different components inside of the domain. So when you look at the rubric, it'll say B4, media relations, so when I title a file B4, it means it's in relation to that particular component. I try to provide evidence of each component as I can throughout the year, but already it's, you know, it's November, and there's several artifacts in there for your review. Um, this is the evaluation timeline, it begins every year in April, doesn't follow the traditional school year, because we talked about that when we converted to this process, we wanted it to be, um, something that was more in line with, um, fiscal year, from a traditional perspective, not necessarily school fiscal year. But we begin the evaluation process in April with a personnel committee establishing my goals. Um, the, the goals are established and distributed in May. In August, we have the first informal update, which you received an email from me, just kind of put in a formal narrative. Today, a formal update in October, we didn't meet until the end of November, so you're getting the October update now. In December, we receive another informal update with progress on each of those domains and district goals. The process really begins in earnest in January, we'll have a personnel committee meeting, which will review the entire evaluation process in addition to my contract. We'll talk about, um, what evidence the board wants to see in my February update, which will be the, my final presentation to the board, similar to this, but it will kind of dig a deeper dive into each of the domain areas. You'll have the opportunity though to review that for an entire month personally, privately. Then we meet in closed session in March to fill out and complete the form together. Remember in years past, we used to do the individual forms that kind of compiled the data. Last year's session was an extended one, because we did it together, but we wanted to offer more time for the board to review the formal update before they were asked to sit down in March and actually offer your input as to how I'm rated in each category. So you'll have an entire month to review, um, my formal update, look at all the evidence, come to the meeting in March in closed session. If you approve of the evaluation and we, and you actually submit a score that's effective or higher for me, and you adopt the contract language, which will be submitted prior to that March date, we return to open session and vote on both, both to adopt my evaluation and to approve my contract, if that's what the board decides. That has to be voted on open session, discussed and closed, and then we begin the process again in April. So I wanted to, um, give you an update, uh, this was a big, this is going to be a big part of my life, our life, for the next year. Uh, so certainly the strategic planning process will be, um, a major part of the board's evaluation of my effectiveness in the coming, the coming year. But as you have seen, we've already conducted seven focus panels, um, you received the board, the consultant report in October, so I won't labor that. The full report, uh, that board report is available online, I provided a link here for your, uh, for your viewing pleasure, but we have that link inside of the strategic plan. This is the front page of our district's website, and you click on 2020 Vision LCI Strategic Planning, and this is a great way, a great resource to direct people in the community who don't, who have questions. We have a number of documents contained in here, maps, graphs, charts, the video invitation I did. Um, a lot of this is part of the presentation that I gave to the focus panels, but a lot of it's really good information. So for example, you have the focus panel for report, someone wasn't able to come to the board meeting, they want to know what the consultant said about the focus panels, there's the summary of findings right there for anyone to review. Um, we do the frequently asked questions document, which is a culmination of lots of questions we've gotten from the community, from the staff, it's part of my superintendent's blog, but that's right here, so anyone that wants to know what's going on, you're two clicks away from having access to a ton of information. Um, we ask questions that people ask, what's the timeline, why is the current plan necessary? We get into some specifics, what about the year round program? Um, you know, what would happen with those elementary buildings? Lots of just very basic questions with direct answers, that's all available. We want as much transparency and easy access for the community as possible, folks, it doesn't get any easier than putting it on the front page of the district's website and, and click on.
It's, it's nice too that you have that hot link within the document, so you don't have to go searching for it.
You don't got to search for it.
Just jumping back and forth that you, to reference.
No, that's exactly the point, and we, we have hoped to do that throughout the year, so that's where we're at with that. This is a list of community and staff outreach that I've already done and will continue to do, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but it does give you a really good look, um, the name of the group that I meet with and the date. Uh, so today is November 7th, I met with the Schueller Parent Group this morning, a meeting with Lynch next week, and the first community focus group, as you can see at the bottom of the left-hand column, number 12. Um, but you'll also see lots of student groups on there, LHS Key Club, ZEMR Student Council, NJHS at Roman Warner, our Omni Council, National Honor Society, community focus groups, we'll see Optimus Club, the Lupier Tea Party invited me to speak to their group, a number of other groups, I've reached out to the retired teachers group here in the county, um, I'll meet with the Democrats, the Republicans, the Kowanians, anybody that wants to meet to hear about the plan. The Lupier Alumni Association is hosting me for lunch in December, so lots of outreach, right? And, and, and you need to know this, um, so if you have, you have access to these dates, if you know people from these clubs or these groups, please, um, encourage them to attend those days so they can hear directly from me, answer any questions they might have. The other really important piece of this strategic plan process is don't be afraid as a board member to direct people directly to me. Encourage them to sign up for the focus panels. Email Mary Shul, we've got what, 75, 80 people signed up for the two panels, which is a pretty good number, but we want more, right? We still have, you know, a little bit less than a week to get folks there next Monday at ZEMR, um, and, but they can also hear a very similar presentation at one of these, one of these engagements. Um, what are some of the things that are coming up in the focus panel? What are some of the big issues, right? Um, some of the big issues are transportation. It's, uh, I really anticipated greater pushback on things like the closure of elementary schools. I really, uh, expected a lot more pushback on the grade level configuration. People in general, and I, I probably presented to a different group as we saw from the previous slide, at least once, about twice, a few times every day, so I've said this presentation, I'm saying it in my sleep. Chrissy told me last night that I said the word focus panel in my sleep, so I know that I'm thinking about it all the time. I think part of that was staying up till 3:30, watching election results, and waking up at 4:30 to get the election results. But people are less concerned about the big picture, bond, closure of schools, grade level reconfiguration, and much more concerned about the logistics. What time will the school buildings be open? How long are the bus ride routes going to take? Our class size is going to be bigger as a result of this. What's going to happen to the staff? Just really, really key issues, but they're not necessarily concerned, I think there's a level of trust that they have with us to deal with some of those. I think there's a level of trust that they have with us to deal with some of those other issues. But the high school partnership with community services is a new concept. People want to know, how's that going to work logistically? How are you going to have members of the community matriculating to a campus at the same time high school students are? How does that work? So, we have to flush that out. And schools start that in time. Year round program, what's that going to look like? The bond dollars and the actual campaign itself, lots of great questions around that. How do we get a successful bond campaign? Lupier or a draft recognition service isn't that great. And then quite personally, staff and community morale. During major change, we have to identify that change is tough for parents, change is tough on our staff, it's tough on our kids. And how do we keep focus on the great TLT report, making sure we have things like that, a great audit report, make sure that we're running the district the right way and also manage through a major change? I know that that's heavy, heavy on people's minds. Well, the Schipper parents today, here's a great point one of the parents raised. Hey Matt, we love Schipper. Things are working here, right? We don't want to lose what we, what we gained. And I said neither do we. We're not unhappy with the current configuration, right? We designed it, a 6'7", an 8'9", a 10"12", a CFI. We came up with all this stuff. We love it. It's not a matter of a preference of this new organization. It's partly a matter of necessity, right? We know we're getting smaller. We know we have to reduce our organizational footprint. We know we have to reduce operational costs. But how do we do so in a thoughtful way that takes the best of all these buildings, right? And puts them under one or two roofs, right? So, that's, it's not a zero sum game. We're pitting the current structure versus the new or the, or the plan. We like it too. Heck, we came up with it. So, we need to take some pride in that as a board, as a leadership team and say, hey, we like it too, but we're also continuing the decline in enrollment and we have this challenge ahead of us. So, what are the next steps? The ongoing interaction with the community, that's going to happen now until next November. I want to meet with all board committees in December because that will be following a bulk of those community interactions, follow both focus groups, and I want to sit down with each board committee and talk about the options, what we heard. You'll be a part of those. Many of the board members have signed up to be a part of the focus groups, so you're going to hear it firsthand. So, that, this will be somewhat redundant, but it'll be an opportunity for you to give me your direct feedback. We want to finalize a plan, present to the community sometime in January. If it's not January, we can push until February and either February or March really begin our campaign to say, we've listened to the community, we've talked to folks, we've really reached out, now it's time to start pushing forward and getting, and getting some action on, and getting this thing passed. So, again, we're, you know, my conversations with the community groups that I've mentioned as part of this new community-based connection of the new high school, some of those conversations are very true, some of them are, right? As we get into the logistics and the nitty-gritty and kind of get away from the vision down to the how's it's actually going to work, some of that stuff is coming to fruition, some stuff's not working, but that's the whole point. The whole point is going through this evolution. I told the Schipper parents today at my meeting, if you don't think the plan has changed, it's already changed since the focus panels. We've already got feedback from the year round staff, hey, we don't want it that way, we want it this way. So, we've changed it three or four times already. So, come to the focus groups and help change our mind again. So, I just need the board to help me in that, in that effort. And I think the reason I wanted to kind of focus on strategic plans is because just, I don't want to, I don't want to be disingenuous. Yes, I'll be managing the district like I always have, but my focus and energy and attention and effort this year will be in getting this thing done and you need to know that. We've got a great team that can handle the rest of this stuff. We've got Professor Carmella here. You know, I think we're in good hands.
I have one thing I would like to add. The content of the meeting with these board committees in December.
Yes.
We should be scheduling meetings with our board members. I'd like to add that content in as well.
Okay.
I'd like them to be able to be up to speed on where we're on this process.
Great.
I mean, January, things are going to start happening that.
Sure.
And it would be helpful for them to have that information coming in.
That timeline will locate everybody in terms of pacing.
I know you mentioned that concern you're hearing that in our lot is if you close the elementary buildings, what are we going to do with the buildings? That was brought up to me today. I, I don't know if I could take that off of a concern, if it is a concern for parents and that would give the value for the buildings. That was a big discussion about Seaton and Elba being sold and, and I'm like.
So, I think that's a great point, Jan. I met with the ZEMR staff today and that very question came up too. What are we doing with the money? What are they worth? What can we get for them? We have already inquired about a market study. I think we're going to be well-served, quite frankly, because we put some sinking fund dollars and some bond dollars on each of those buildings that we'll be recommending for closure, that at least a portion of the proceeds goes to pay down that bond. I think that makes a lot of sense.
That tied into that.
Normally, normally with Jan and the non-bond campaign year, we would say, hey, 100% of those proceeds going back into operational costs or funds and we're going to use it to do upgrades throughout the district. But if we are fortunate enough to pass the bond and pass some of that revenue coming in, we won't necessarily have a necessity to use the sale of property money, but we also need to be very honest with the community. And we haven't used, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but we spent the last sinking fund dollar in 2011, '12?
1213.
1213. And a lot of that stuff was on Wi-Fi. It wasn't on roofs, boilers, repaving. So, that was closer to 2007, 2008, 2009. So, here we are, going to be 10 years away from spending any real money infrastructurally. And there's, the cost of doing business on these buildings built in the 60s is real money, but we don't want to be flip about it and tell the community, well, we spent that money back in 2007, so what's the big deal? Because that's not going to fly either. We're going to have to be, so I think a good answer to that is, yeah, we want to get market value for it, like everybody else does, are going to give away for a song and we're going to take a portion of that money and pay down our debt. That's a really, that's a really good point.
As far as the meetings in December, I think you've already, I know you've already scheduled one, but earlier in December.
Okay.
Seems to be a better, I mean, we just get inundated. We have, you know, you guys are going down for Christmas break. I mean, there's just so much going on in December.
Okay. Earlier the better. You got it. We were little, Mary and Jared and I and Nicole, we thought we'd have a flood of people signing up for the focus groups. Like I wanted to have two. I thought we'd have 100 and 100 people there because there was a lot of interest last time around high school merger. So, there's two ways to look at that. Number one, which is the glasses half-full version, which I tend to lean towards, which is people generally trust the district. There isn't significant pushback and we're not as up in arms about it. Or number two, there is concern, but people may, they might already and not necessarily interested in coming to see the, hear the facts or the presentation. So, we're going to approach it as though it's, it's the latter, right? Because we don't want to sit back and assume that everybody just loves it, it's great nerve-wracking. We want to exact the campaign as though we've got to change minds and hearts. And anyone that's ever gone door to door in a political campaign knows that the polls don't always necessarily tell the story. When you talk to people who don't answer polls, they'll tell you exactly what they think about something when you have a different door. So, and also this focus group process, I am managing with a cold team personally, but in terms of the actual campaign, once we hit like February, we're going to bring in the consultants back and say, okay, what do we do to pass a successful bond campaign? What are the targets, the targeted media? What are the things that we've had successful districts do when they want to pass this full bond? And we'll focus on that.
I was just going to say, I like to be optimistic as well and think that maybe the lesser participation is to make it people trust us. And I, and I do believe that. But I was also was thinking in the last several weeks with the midterm elections, the political climate being inundated with news, there's Oshers and phone calls, that sometimes people are maybe overwhelmed with information and it just wore down. So, I just want to take that with a grain of salt that, you know, maybe once January hits, people might be revitalized hopefully and that can be good or bad.
I think there's definitely some truth to that. There's definitely some truth to that. There's a little bit of fatigue in the whole process and once the new year settles in, people will start to pay a little bit more attention to local issues, which is good for us. The other good piece of news, if you followed the school bond campaigns around the communities, a lot of success yesterday, a lot of yes votes. There is a changing tide into recognizing that school builders need this kind of revenue, need this kind of money to manage. That's changing. That's changing. That's, that's good. We have a great story to tell, right? Being fiscally conservative, being very sound in our practice, merging the high schools, closing buildings, consolidating our, our footprint and not asking the committee for a dime to do that. It's been a great story to tell, but it's now time to go back out there. I'm excited about it. I mean, I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of people already and people are very honest with me. They're either like, this sucks or, you know, we all like it, here's what we all like or it's great.
Fascinating. How many sports fields have that building been built? I don't know.
Very sadly, I know.
I don't know. They're like, how do you put, how do you put a library in there and this and that? And I'm like, it's not final. I mean, come to the meeting on the 12th. So, I can't do that.
The focus group meeting, Jan, I'm really glad you mentioned that because we're going to put that information out. We have a packet of information that each person will receive when they come to the focus group. So, that is going to be, listen to Matt and talk for two hours. I'm going to give a presentation and it's going to be a very active board group. So, we actually, Mark and I worked it out today. We have a document that has every single building in the district and it has every piece of data you would ever want to know on one. How many parking lots cases? What's the square footage? When was the boiler put in? When was the last edition put on? How much sink and front money was there? What's the age of the roof? You know, how, how many classrooms? Say average square footage of the classroom, how many lockers? And you can see it all compared to the neighborhood building next to them because people want to know that data, right? And we'll have all of that available and more. I've got maps of your building, right? You know, one dimensional map, you can see it. We'll have all that data in front of them because we can't ask them to make informed input on what the plan should be without having all the data that we have access to.
And some people were better with visuals than you.
Absolutely. I've got to see it.
See a school built in 1903.
Yeah. But yeah, we have, here it was built, how much money was spent. They know.
Good stuff.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
It cuts to action right, we have a consent briefing and some other committee call for further discussion. Like that. Approval in the minutes of the October 3rd, regulating and overlaying per request for the bottom students to that 3.
I'll make a motion, the meeting of the head to be waived and the consent, the item to approve as presented.
Motion to support.
Yeah, one more meeting.
I know it's exciting. I know it's a two. Yes.
This is Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Aye.
Mrs. Byer.
Aye.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Mrs. Bush.
An enthusiastic yes.
Keller says aye, the motion carries and that takes us to the 2019-20 countywide pre-labor day start waiver.
I'll make a motion with a resolution for the 2019, 2020 countywide pre-labor day start waiver to be approved as.
Okay.
Second, are there any questions on motion? Mrs. Nun, Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Mrs. Byer.
Aye.
Mr. Nolan.
Aye.
Mrs. Novak.
Aye.
Mrs. Peabody.
Yes.
And Keller said aye, that one carries.
Oh, superintendent comments are not on there and board member comments aren't on the agenda.
We are stopped.
Well, nobody caught that.
Item, item seven, board member comments. Board member comments, are there any board member comments?
I'd like to thank Mark and Matt for a very positive audit report. It is because of the transition and everything else that we get, what we get when Eric comes and, and thank you. You know, did a great job. Doug and Jan, I love to hear when your kids are successful and that's our goal as well here. Welcome Brad and Summer. You'll have a good time and we have a football game on Friday.
What was that? Have a good time?
Have a good time.
Don't use your last motion as evidence of that most of the time. We have a great.
I have to say, I've been attending the football games. It's awesome to see the community support and I mean, you can even get a parking place last year. I could, it was really.
And what a great venue, isn't it?
And it was so cool. I saw the superintendent, or the, I'm sorry, the principals from the three elementary schools congregating right by the kids and they were like, and, and one of them said, it's a pleasure, we get to do this. And just their attitude was, was really, really cool. Very impressed for being out there in the cold on a Friday night.
Absolutely.
It was awesome. Really excited about what we had.
Yeah, she made my life last, so it's fun.
It was a complicated, uh, credit trouble.
Yeah, I just, I just want to wrap it up. That's me.
We worked it out. And we worked it out. So, I was like, I want to thank everyone and all the buildings that have worked on that this week. So, actually a lot of them are happy. They get to come during the day and set up and stay overnight. So, I haven't heard one complaint yet. So, yeah, it was just, I just wanted to be on page, so we were like, do what we're doing. Yeah, but I'm really happy that hopefully the win Friday. And we've worked on that. So, but yes, this Saturday is the crucial.
Spend your money.
First big project graduation, so.
Is that CFI?
Yes. CFI, 94, Saturday. You guys have CFI?
I was just going to say, I was going to bring up too, because I was going to say, you know, you had it there on your, your sort of to-do list, but this is a great opportunity on Friday to partner with the community. And I'm wondering how that was all going to get pulled off when we don't have enough partner for football and Ian, we're trying to set up for a craft show.
I got a call last Friday like, are you okay?
Bittersweet.
Yeah.
Well, Denise's credit, she called, talked to Mary, Mary called Ken, Shaq, Doug and Mike Smith. A lot of people involved.
Thanks, a lot of people, yeah.
And our band directors, you know, loading and unloading.
Yeah, because everybody's in mom's house. I was like, I wasn't going to wait till Friday and go, gee, wow, you know.
Well, it's a great problem to have.
But I think that was over time, two of these football games going on, success, yeah. This is an opportunity to showcase all the properties. CFI? Because we have people parking all over it. But the other thing I was going to say is that in connection, if the weather is as it's supposed to be, you might want to take a page out of the U of M golf course where they don't let you park on that during the game. And so, maybe a unique opportunity to show some folks from Roland Warner High School.
I leave that to capable hands, like my high school administrator.
That would be Operation.
Yeah.
I can be a cheerleader.
But I just wanted to say thanks to Doug and Jan. It is always great to have you guys come in and do presentations and it's great to hear the successes that we're having. You know, when Eric said, you know, it's great to see, the word of the game was passion. And I hear that and I see that too, but then I also hear a lot of things you have ahead and I hear exhaustion and we don't want you to get to that point. Again, I want you to say to everyone, including our two new board members, like you had said really, we need to keep finding ways, or try to find ways, get these people what they need, pay them what they deserve, and keep this district moving forward as best we can. Yeah, so thank you, thanks for everything that you guys do, you're not told enough how much we appreciate everything that you do, yeah. I, I, my math is always interesting when I sit down to try to, I, I come up with, you know, Beverly Hillbillies anecdotes, where Jeff Rowe used to sit in cipher, is what they would say?
Not cipher.
Yep, so I was up, I was up here ciphering, and, uh, but I, I find year after year, after year, after year, and Mike and Peggy go back, Peggy goes back the furthest, you know, since Eric was a kid, but, I mean, are you continuously amazed like I am? Because the way I figured this out, we were actually better than half a percent off in the projection for the annual budget, and it was a half a percent to the good. I mean, you know, the old Maxwell smart, you missed it by that one, but, I mean, what an amazing staff we have, Matt, wish all the best, I mean, I know you make him look good, because we know you do all the work, but, you know, but, I mean, what a great team, you guys do a fantastic job, and it's been the case year after year after year, and, you know, and I'm looking at that forty-nine million, and I see how much we missed by, it's like, are you kidding me? If only everyone could be as close with the budgets as you guys are trying to manage this, when we don't even know what the money is we're gonna have each other, I mean, it's just amazing.
Don't let a kid do that, get busted.
Yeah.
Just say.
Right, exactly, but just the, the last thing I wanted to say is, is that congratulations to Brad and Summer, and certainly welcome you aboard, and I very much feel that our community did the right thing, and our board, our district is gonna be a good antimon forward, we're all not always gonna be sitting here and feel really good about you two being here, and, but it's bittersweet, because to have those two means we lose these two too, so I'm gonna have a lot more to say about those two in our next meeting, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, roasted.
I hope you're here.
Putting together a musical presentation.
You're right.
What'd she say?
Peggy, don't.
Oh.
We don't wanna get her coupled on me, you know.
Really, really funny, yeah, at the end of here.
Congratulations, Brad and Summer, and, um, know what it's like to be a candidate, all of Stu, and you're glad yesterday he didn't win, so, it's a really long day, but welcome, and, um, thank you, Doug and Jan. I, I think we could clone you, Jan, I hear great things about you, my, um, daughter's, my cousin's daughter is, is, yeah, like, let me get this straight, she loves you, and she's taking college classes right now, so, um, and kids love you too, and as far as the football team, that's a huge accomplishment, athletic accomplishment, and, um, many of you know, my husband is a substitute teacher in that high school, so we were talking one night, and I went, how are these young men on this football team? Like, how, they're undefeated, he goes, they're the most hopeful group of young men, and my thirty years of being in education that has this accomplishment, 'cause maybe some athletes gotta go to their pad a little bit, but, that's what, that's what I've said about, he goes, you don't even know, if I'm in a class with them, they're focused on their academics, and they're not, they're not, they're very humble about the situation they're in, and that was really, really good to hear, so, congratulations to Mr. Smith and all the coaches and you, the dad, very exciting, so, um, I'm gonna find my snowsuit Friday night. I'm telling you, it's an exciting event, we're a stickback.
Good, these help artists are, so, we're all, you know.
I'm just not sure how I'm gonna do it again. It wasn't good luck.
And then, just this whole strategic plan and all the questions you get, and they wanna talk about things that happened ten years ago too, and I'm like, I can't help you there, I can't help you there.
It'll be written in your paycheck this next year, that's for sure.
That's all right.
Yes.
Well, for me, it's my second-to-last, uh, school board meeting over seven years, I was trying to think of a word that just kinda sums up for me tonight, this meeting, and I was thinking of a word like confident, or satisfying, or heartening, but in every single category, we're just reaching such success, I mean, we've got two great, uh, people coming on board, people that love the school district, love the students, have a passion for the principals, are excited about their sleeves, and just be a part of it, and so I feel so confident about them coming on board, and then we have Eric stand in front of us and talk about us having a remarkable financial health, A-plus compared to the, the districts around us, um, and then to have a report that I got from Michelle about, but where it really matters, is that our students are learning and they're achieving, that our scores are above the state average in almost every category, we're above our peers, uh, everything that we're doing is finally paying off and it's working, and, and that's the most exciting, and then, but, I know it will continue, because we have passion of people like Jan and Doug and I, forgot your name, I'm so sorry, you're a cross-country coach?
Ken.
Ken, that's right, I wanted to say Keith, but it was Ken, but just the passion of the people here in the district, you know, looking at Ken here and our poll team, um, I just know this, the, the school's in great hands, with some of the best people that, you know, I really have had the pleasure of meeting in my life, I really mean that, and I'll save my crying till December, but, um, just thank you to everybody, and, um, I think we're all just really privileged to be a part of something that has, Eric said, has tangible impact on people's lives.
So, one thing about going fast with everything already is, I'm not really quite.
Ditto.
Ditto, right? But I, I did what, what inspired, really just kinda reflected what I've been thinking, is tonight, it just seemed like it was good news after good news after good news, it's really nice, you know, some of us have been around here really often, and, and there's, it's just things that you, that you remember at one point, talking about, well, it'd be nice if we could get this done, it'd be nice if we get that, I mean, all of this stuff is just coming together, and it's so satisfying to see that happen, and it has been, I just say, a great night, good news, so, and I, I won't repeat it all, but thank you all for everything you're doing. Summer, Brad, welcome aboard, we welcome you with open arms, we have frying towels in our pockets when we need them, I know you'll be here for us, and we're here for you, so, thank you.
Same problem you have, Mike, I want the board to remember tonight, um, there may not be, uh, there may be some tough nights ahead, this, uh, this is a challenging process, we have been down this road before, change, uh, evokes a lot of emotion from people, and some of it's positive, and at least a great action, and great, great change, sometimes it comes out in negative ways, and that's directed at me, it'll be directed at you as the board, um, I think Eric said it best, that you have signed up for probably one of the most difficult elected positions, um, that there are primarily because there's no compensation, uh, and people feel very passionately about local government in particular, what happens in their school system, and you will reap the rewards when things go well, and you will, you know, reap their ire when they are pleased with you, so, I also, in, in rec- in, in recognition of Summer and Brad, look at the type of people that this organization attracts, that tells you a lot about who we are, and, and it also speaks to some, most of our candidates that ran and unfortunately didn't win, but we didn't see any negative campaigning, any grudge holding, anyone looking with a particular, particularly negative, um, purpose for getting on the board, and when you read the county press article that did, broke down the bios, and why they wanted to run, for the most part, positive, supportive, wanted to be part of this organization, which attests to the current seated board members, this is a high-functioning, uh, very organized, well-meaning board that understands the shared role between superintendent and, and board members, it's a very, it's a dance, and, and, and it doesn't get done this well in a lot of places, right? And we don't want to take that for granted, that we have a good board, good leadership team, and good outcomes, um, so remember tonight, and the last thing I wanted to mention was in reaction to the comment about, Lisa made earlier, about, um, the work that our counselors do, the work that our administrators do, the strategic plan, in reducing the number of buildings we operate, will give us an opportunity to bolster the deficiencies in staffing that we already know we have, we don't want four counselors at a high school, fifteen hundred students, and just putting more and more on them, because we're not offering less, we're offering more, someone has to service those programs, and, you know, Jan and I have worked very, very closely the last eight years together, talking about organizational structure, and what's, and we've experimented with some, and we've gone back to tried and true, and we've done innovative, but we've always been open to a new way of doing business to try and get the most productivity out of that same human resource, um, unit, uh, and there becomes a point where there is diminishing returns, right? Where there's just simply too much to do, we've added too much, we haven't taken anything off the plate, same can be said of our administrators, same can be said of teachers, too, so when we focus on what's important, which is the experience that kids get when they walk into that classroom, and close the door, and the supports that are available, what's more important? Is it more adults and greater service, or is it trying to keep as many buildings open as possible? I think we know the answer to that, so when we do have those tough nights, when people are popping the podium, pointing their fingers, keep your eye fixed on what our goal is, and if at the end, if you, if you can tell me today that honestly, the level of service and what we offer kids is superior of a pure high school than it was at either East or West, we're winning this thing, but we can say that, we can say, we are offering more and better programming because we only have one high school, that is a fact, it doesn't mean it's so much more good, it's not a indictment on the past, it's just a recognition of what was good, and how can we get it to great, and the same is true of this engagement, this planning process, we have a great school district, we have a great track record the last eight years to show our growth, how do we get it to, to be exceptional, how do we get it to be elite, and we need more support, we need more people.
There's never more, thank you. I, I don't know where you're going or what you're doing, but, at finance announced meetings, Matt, man, good luck to you, whatever your next adventure is.
Absolutely.
Motion to adjourn.
This is Peabody.
Aye.
This is Nolan.
Aye.
This is Becker.
I'll see you tomorrow, you can get ready.
Sounds good.
The behind the building.
I'll find you, I'll see you.